Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 18th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council. We can start by calling the meeting in order with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of the bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, from sin and gain in power and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Harley, will you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have four items on the consent agenda this morning. We have legislative minutes from May the 4th, 2021, open work session minutes from April the 6th, 2021 pertaining to the Charter Section 201, Compositions and Districts Redistricting Committee, open work session minutes from April the 20th, 2021, on the county vehicle leasing program, and open work session minutes from April the 20th, 2021, on the quarterly report for the airport cares grant funding.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. At this time, we've got a couple proclamations, and we're going to start with National EMS Week, and Mr. Dave Shipley at the podium.
Every year at this time, we always try to recognize our EMS professionals in the field with National EMS Week, because they don't get enough recognition. However, we did recognize the fire departments and just about every department in the county a while back for their work on COVID, and it goes without saying that fire and EMS professionals have done a lot of work in carrying this county with COVID. So they definitely deserve this recognition. So proclamation for the 2021 National EMS Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in the 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fills a gap by providing out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine and follow-up care, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, and nurses, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Therefore, it be resolved that the Wycomico County Council and the acting county executive hereby proclaim May 17th through May 23rd, 2021, as National EMS Week, done this day, the 18th of May of 2021, and signed by the acting county executive as well as the entire county council. So here we have Mr. Shipley.
Thank you. It's truly an honor for me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the county's EMS practitioners and professionals. Their dedicated first responders provide immediate care during a health crisis. Whether there is an accident or an illness, these trained professionals work around the clock to make sure care is quickly available. EMS practitioners are truly professionals, and I hold them in the highest regard and the highest caliber. Thank you.
And now we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Mr. Whiteley. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Wycomico County, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the acting county executive hereby designate the week, May 17th through the 23rd, as National Public Works Week in Wycomico County, and urges all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life, done this 18th day of May, 2021, signed by the acting county executive, Mr. Posoda, and the entire Wycomico County Council. So, thank you.
I'd like to tell council, thank you for this proclamation. I'd also like to take a minute to thank the men and women of public works, solid waste roads, and engineering for keeping the county running smoothly. Thank you.
Ms. Harley.
The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on the constant yield rate, and we have Pam Owen here, our Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
All right. At this time, we're going to open the floor for the public hearing for the constant yield rate. Do we have anyone that wants to make a statement, or any questions from the council? Any questions, any comments? That was easy, Ms. Owen. All right. Ms. Harley, next.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 52-2021. This is authorizing the acting county executive to process a program, open space land conversion, from the property known as the West Metro Core on Lavendishale Road to the Conley Mill property on Conley Mill Road. And I believe we have Mr. Steve Miller here, direct recreation parks and tourism, if there are any questions.
Okay. This time, we're going to open the floor for the public hearing on the West Metro Core. Do we have any public comments? Any public... Yes, sir. Go to the podium, state your name and your county of residence.
Thank you, President Dodd. Thank you, county council, and everyone here. I was able to speak a few weeks ago about the opportunity to have another, hopefully another park here in Salisbury in Wycomico County, and the Conley Mill land acquisition is a great opportunity for this. Some see it as a transfer one to the other. I see it as an opportunity for both locations to be used for the public. I think there's three reasons why we should actually work on having a park there. The first is equal tourism. A lot of people think that Salisbury is just a way to get to Ocean City or a way to get to Rehoboth, but really we want this to be a destination for people to come to bike, to hike, to run, to birdwatch, to do things here in our county and in our city. The second thing is the local impact. As a father of three children, as a member of the county, of a resident of Fruitland, I like the opportunity to be able to take my kids and my wife to different parts of Wycomico County to hike, to camp, to boat, to go fishing. And as they remove land for the landfill, there's going to be what I believe big holes there that could be made for fishing, and I doubt there's anyone in here that doesn't like to go fishing, and to have more opportunities to do that would be great. And the third thing is basically the opportunity for us here to have a legacy to leave behind for future generations. As you set aside land and you make opportunities for people to go out and to participate in outdoors activities, that makes the lifestyle here on Delmarva richer, and it makes people want to move here and continue to live here. And my plan is to live here until I retire, and hopefully my kids will want to stay as well. And where we keep them here is to have opportunities like Conley Mill. Having Conley Mill connected to Nailor Mill will make the park even bigger, and I know I've received some supportive emails from a number of you. I'd love to see more support and love to see this pass and go through. And again, I worked with a nonprofit called the Algonquin Ultras, Inc., and our whole purpose is to maintain trails on Delmarva, so we will help actually create the trails, maintain the trails, and promote the trails. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Yes, sir. Can you make it to the podium? I see you brought your friend with you.
He has to help me occasionally, not 100%.
Good dog.
My buddy is Boo, and my name's Chris Roberts. I'm here to speak in favor of activities at Conley Mill Park, and I want to thank all of you for giving us the time to come and express our views. I've been a member of the Professional Disc Golf Association for 20 years now. I designed the golf course, disc golf course at Shoemaker Pond, and about 10 others on the Delmarva Peninsula. I work with Innovate Disc Golf. I'm a team ambassador. I do demos for schools, kids, churches, whoever would like to learn a new activity, scouts. We've done several demos. Personally, I've played in three world championships. I've won a gold medal in the Senior Olympics. I was a charter club president for our local disc golf club. It's, we call it Mid-Delmarva, but it's based here in Salisbury. We have 60 active members. We've been together as a group since 2012. At Shoemaker locally, I've seen it go from when I designed the course 16 years ago, seeing four or five people in that park in a month's time, sometimes nobody for two months, restrooms were kept closed. We now have 200 different disc golfers a month that are playing Shoemaker. We host three or four tournaments. We've raised over $6,000 for Halo in the last five years. So we have a very active group of players. Disc golf has been very unique. When I started playing in about '97, there were about 600 courses in the country. In a couple of years, it grew to 800. It's a pretty good percentage of growth. From all the figures I've been able to get from our national association and a few manufacturers, we've experienced very close to a 15% growth rate from 2000 up until about 2018. 2019, things started exploding. We started experiencing a 20% growth rate. This was in number of discs sold, number of courses put in, number of players paying for the professional association, number of tournaments, prize money. Every aspect was up to over 15% a year. 2020 came with COVID, and one of the last things to go were open area parks, but we experienced a growth like we've never seen before. Disc golf hasn't been like paintball or some other sports that come and go. They linger on. Disc golf has had a steady growth for over 25 years. This past year, most places, most metrics, United States, Canada, the world, even South America grew by about a 33% rate. We are seeing Shoemaker parking lot filled up all the time. I think we have a very good working relationship with the county. Our local club has put in the course, designed the course, maintained the course, and welcomes visitors from all over the world. I just can't speak highly enough about this sport. I'm 70 years old, and I can't bend over to pick something up off the ground, so hence I have my dog to pick my disc up when I have to throw another one. But I played three or four sports in high school, college. I've coached boys, girls, athletic activities. I've never been as passionate about or excited about a sport as disc golf. It's great for people from eight to 80. I'm 70 years old. I can't play badminton. I can't duck pin bowl. I can throw a frisbee, and that's about it. Again, this sport is just exploding, and I wish you would consider this park to be a permanent thing for outdoor space and give disc golf a chance to be put in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've never played disc golf, but every time I go to Shoemaker Park, there's a lot of people playing there, so I can confirm what you stated.
Can you tell us anything about disc golf?
Well, first of all, we should say, by the way, this man's kind of a legend in his own right. We did a calculation the other day, and Mr. Roberts, just because of his work with Shoemaker Pond alone, we figured out that probably he's probably brought in excess of 10,000 people outside the county to Wycomico County just from that one course alone, which has really exploded. I played, I play disc golf, and I actually got my first ace the other day, which is a hole-in-one, if anyone ever plays. So he's done really amazing work, and it'd be nice to be able to continue to expand some of our disc golf work in some of these parks. So I appreciate you coming out here. But got to say, if you've never played, go out and play disc golf. Shoemaker Pond is a fantastic course, and I know our Parks Department, they're paying attention to that and actually looking for expansions, and so is the city, so.
If I could just put in one more shame, Mr. Whiteley. I've recently...
We have to make sure it's recorded.
I've recently gotten into dog disc sports as well, and I have three dogs I compete with, my male, my female, and a male from my female's last litter. I drive about seven hours, so my three dogs can each compete for two minutes. I'd love to get something like that here in Wycomico County. Dogs and frisbees. Man, if you guys don't watch TV and look at the commercials, dogs and frisbees. And it's another avenue, and I hate to speak and run, but I have to go to a dog competition in Annapolis. I have to pick up my granddog in Southern Maryland and get up there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I think I can say for the majority of the council, if not all, that we are dog lovers, so thank you for bringing Boo.
So do you have any more questions or comments?
Come on to the podium. Thank you, Boo.
It's a hard act to follow. Good morning. I'm Judith Strigling. I'm the Chair of the Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, and I'm here to speak in support of this resolution. Our committee was closely involved with the process of the acquisition.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a pretty lame voice.
It's not your fault. It's sitting up high.
Okay. Is that better?
Can everybody hear it?
Okay, sorry. Our committee was closely involved at the time that the park was acquired by the county, and we recognized that this represents a really important recreational opportunity for the county, specifically in passive recreation, bird watching, hiking. What I also want to call to your attention is the importance of this piece of property ecologically for the county. It represents a really key piece of the network of forested areas that begins up around the visitor center, the welcome center, and extends way over to the west, and it will impact conservation over the Paleo Channel, which is, of course, a really key resource for our county, as well as protecting the headwaters of the North Prong of the Wycomico River. There are three tributaries that come together right in this property. The bird populations in this region are really important. These older forests represent a really important habitat. The opportunities for people to get out and enjoy this kind of landscape are really key. So our committee has strongly endorsed this resolution, and I appreciate your support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. My name is Al DeMol. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I thank the council. It's time for this resolution. As an active participant in a lot of ultra-running and trail racing, the economical impact of this, we've seen it in the Oremil, what baseball does. Mr. Swanson has brought in usually 200, 250 people for his races. Like the gentleman that talked about the disc ball, people come, will come to a place for a trail. I visited hundreds of places just for their trails, and I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
I've got a quick comment.
Yes, Mr. McCain.
I want to make this while Mr. Miller is here.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of indirectly related, but last weekend, they had the opening of the Challenger Baseball Program. It feels seven and a half, and Steve Miller's work, his vision for that project, and bringing that to where it is now, and seeing Steve out there as a coach and pitching to everyone, I mean, that was your element. That was Steve Miller at his best. So I just wanted to commend you while we still had you here today, and just thank you for all your work you did with that project.
Mr. Miller, did you get enough help? Do you still need help for the program?
We're in pretty good shape. We always would use more help, but we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, because I know we were looking for coaches and mentors or something. So good, that's good to hear. All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments, council comments on this? Ms. Ackley.
I just have a comment, and I appreciate everyone coming to speak on behalf of Conley Mill. I want to separate out the two pieces of this resolution, the first being Conley Mill as a designated program open space, which I'm fully in support of. The other issue is abandoning the West Metro Park on the west side of town, and there was equal support for the West Metro Park as there was for Conley Mill. So I just, I don't want us to lose sight of this resolution is a conversion. We will be abandoning the West Metro Park on the west side and convert it to Conley Mill. So if there is some way that we could possibly separate this resolution, or if the county executive is willing to make it two separate issues, I think voting that way would be a more, it would be a clear expectation of what was going to happen.
Mr. President. Ms. Holloway.
I understand what Councilman Ackley is saying. The West Metro Park is a, like she said, there was a lot of passion when that was, property was purchased, and I think the folks on that side of town deserve a park in the future. I know it's taken a long time. It's not happened yet, and none of these parks happen yet. It's not going to happen fast at Conley Mill. But the thing we have at West Metro Park, we have an income reduced, producing property that we can convert the money that they're making from West Metro Park to Conley Mill. We don't have to give up the West Metro Park land. It can be used in the future. So I think that would be a way to go. The money that's being earned off renting the farmland at West Metro can be sent to Conley Mill to help develop it. We hear a lot about they want Conley Mill to stay in its natural state. They don't want a lot of development out there. I'm sure the guys riding bikes don't want, don't want parking lots and pavement and all that, so it's not going to, the cost of doing what people want to do at Conley Mill, I see somebody shaking their head yes back there, and leaving it in a natural state, it's not going to cost a lot of money. There will be cost involved, no doubt, but we can work on it as long as we have time. There might be open space money that comes available in the future to help it come along. So I think we could go that route.
Right.
Mr. President, I would suggest, yes, two things. One is, I think, before we have continued council comments, there ought to be a motion and a second to approve the resolution if we're going to go that direction. That being said, if that were the case, I'd want to table it, because I'd like to have another work session for the council if only takes a vote on this.
I think that's a good idea. Can we have a motion to a Sep. Resolution Number 52-2021?
Just a move.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to table the resolution until we've had it, or postpone the resolution until we've had a chance for another work session on this.
All right. I think it's a good idea. We have a motion on the floor to table Resolution Number 52-2021. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Ms. Harley.
I just want to clarify, that motion is a motion to postpone, correct?
Yes, for further discussion. We'll have another work session on it. All right. Any more discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, passed unanimously, so it is tabled. At this time, we've got the Wycomico County delegation. It's going to give us a quick legislative recap for the 2021 General Assembly Session. If you would, come join us. Does anybody want some water?
Thank you.
Yes.
Charles, why don't you pass these down?
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our General Assembly to the floor, and I want to thank you for the awesome work that you guys have been doing for the past three months and past several years. So this time, I'll turn it over to Delegate Carl Anderton, who is the Chair of the delegation.
Sure. First off, it's good to see everybody, and it's good to have everybody here. I just want to take a second real quick and talk about this excellent group of public servants that I get to sit near and work with. This session was arduous at best, you know. There was a lot of separation, limited co-mingling, sharing of ideas, but we were able to overcome all that and accomplish some very, very amazing things despite all the challenges put in our way, not only with the budget, but with legislative priorities as well. And so I just want to, again, just commend everybody that is part of Team Wycomico for carrying a heavy load this session. We were able to accomplish a lot of great things. I'll speak very briefly about the first thing that we were able to do, which was everybody here worked together to override the veto on the disparity grant legislation we passed last year, which brings millions of dollars to the county every year. And so that not only was a restoration, but an increase over previous highs. As you know, before we were in office, it was at 70%, then it was cut way down to 60. We got it to 67. Now we're at 75 with a permanent restoration. So for it being a fund that unfortunately the county needs to depend on, we were able to increase that, as well as, you know, with higher user revenues. You know, we're looking at about $4 million a year now in road money, you know, from a previous historical low of $700,000, and so we're going to continue to work on that as well. A lot of great things in the budget, from Beaver Run Elementary School to Tuxent's Branch Drainage, Pittsfield Water Treatment Center, Lower Shore Clinic, and the list goes on and on. But I think at this point, I will stop and allow my teammates to tell you about all the wonderful things we've done, and I'll start right here with Senator Addy Eckert.
Okay. We have eight members of the delegation here, so if we could just keep it brief, because I know some may be repetitive, and we don't want that to happen, but thank you, Delegate Anderton.
Sure. Thank you very much, Senator Addy Eckert here, and I'm on the Budget and Tax Committee, so I just want to share with you a little bit about the budget highlights that are certainly significant, because we went into this session expecting that we were going to have a continued structural deficit, you know, that structural hole that we've had since I've been in office for 27 years, and it was before I got there that it occurred and continued. And we were concerned about what was going to happen with the Rainy Day Fund, because we're in the middle of, you know, a worldwide pandemic. So there were a lot of initiatives that the governor put in place right before we got to the budget to be able to get economies of scale so that we could offset the cost of some of those COVID expenses, which ultimately, as you well know, we wound up then, after a lot of hard work, with an increase of $79 million in FY '22 and a forecasted surplus of $151 by fiscal 2026. So we are structurally balanced for the first time in history that I've been associated with the legislature, and more than $2.1 billion in cash is preserved, which includes a record $1.4 billion in the state's Rainy Day Fund. So the budget exceeds even the state's required contribution to the pension system, something to keep in mind. And in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, the budget provided $500 million in federal support for testing, contact tracing, and vaccines, in addition to $687 million already that the state had provided. The budget then provided $580 million in targeted tax relief as well. Public schools received in excess of $7.5 billion. Community colleges received $371.5 million in support. $22 million is allocated for projects such as state parks. $1 million is allocated to restore state-owned lakes, and all state... $1 million is allocated to restore state-owned lakes, and all state employees received $1,000 bonus in fiscal 2021. Again, the budget supports healthcare services, $13.5 billion to Medicaid coverage to 1.5 million residents, so, and the rescue money, as you well, and the Senate added relief funds so that we could try to offset the costs that most citizens, particularly our vulnerable citizens, incurred. There was a lot of work in addition to, you'll hear about police reform, there was a lot of work to be able to target some interventions to what the COVID pandemic exacerbated with our minority populations. And so a lot of emphasis on healthcare, on maternal well-being and child health and services associated, because if you want to keep businesses running, we have to have healthy families and kids ready to come to school to learn. So I'm just going to give you that kind of a broad overview to get us going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Eckhart.
Thank you, President Dodd, and it's good to see all the council members. I, first of all, want to thank you for the extra effort that so many of you made during session to communicate with us, because this was a COVID-19 relief session, and we had our challenges not having the open hearings where you all have been up with us in Annapolis on a regular basis. So the extra effort you made, whether they were Zoom calls, emailing us, calling us, really was helpful to us. I want to first start with, to point out that the most important priority passed early on in the legislative session, and that was Governor Hogan proposed his COVID-19 relief assistance and worked directly with the leadership of the House of Delegates. I know that our Speaker Pro Tem was involved with that, as well as with President Bill Ferguson on the Senate side. What, I think what's important to note there, that that was a, an initiative that was actually worked through, approved, and put into effect by February 15th of the session. Meanwhile, as many of you all know, at the national congressional, federal level, there were still a lot of, you know, infighting about what that federal relief package might look like, but here we were at the state level in a bipartisan way, able to work through Governor Hogan's and the, I would say, the Maryland General Assembly's most important legislative priority. It was a one, it was a $1 billion emergency stimulus and tax, tax relief package that Senator Eckert touched on in both having Senator Eckert and Delegate Hartman on those committees, you know, was very helpful to keep that moving. You had the budget highlights, but I think it's important to note that we, that is our one constitutional responsibility, is to pass a balanced budget, and in this COVID-19 focus, we were first concerned about the challenges there, but given the fact you heard the report of, you know, having that $1.1 billion in the rainy day fund and also being able to fund our priorities in this year's budget was significant, as well as taking care of several of the Wycomico County funding highlights. And again, working with Senator Eckert on the Senate side, we were pleased that some of our local initiatives, whether it was Vehicles for Change that Senator Eckert and I worked on and supported, whether it was the Fruitland Volunteer Fire Company, a local bond initiative, and then some of the, in the capital budget, it was noted, the Fruitland Tuxent Branch Drainage, Pittsfield was mentioned, the Lower Shore Clinic, and of course, the Wycomico Local Park and Recreation. We are always glad to see that money. And again, I was glad to see that you highlighted Seven and a Half Field, because that has truly been a highlight that our entire community and all our partners should take pride in that, truly tears of joy when we were there for that opening. I also wanted to point out, I serve on the Senate Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs Committee. That committee receives the highest number of bills for consideration in the entire Maryland General Assembly. So some of the priority bills came through my committee as well, and I wanted to point to a couple of them. I think if we learned anything with COVID-19 is that increasing our broadband access has to be a continued top priority. My concern was, the rest of the Maryland General Assembly woke up to the need of having broadband access statewide, and as you all know, we have been working on this priority for so many years with the tri-county council, with rural Maryland. So we needed to make sure that as the focus came on broadband access and those funds came, that we made sure that we would receive our fair share for, for rural Maryland and specifically for the shore. And I would like to say that I welcome the opportunity to continue more detailed conversations, whether it's through the tri-county council, with the council directly, but that has to be our continued share priority. Those bills did come through my committee, and I, you know, will continue to make sure we have a rural focus on those bills. Also, the bills that came through my committee were the telehealth bills, and we were successful in that area as well. I specifically had two narrow bills that moved forth in the telehealth arena. One was an occupational therapist compact, and the reason that's important, it increases rural care for providers and for patients. And as you know, with my district bordering Delaware to the north and Virginia to the south, having these telehealth opportunities to increase access for our rural patients is a priority. The other bill, and I know this council is well aware, that unfortunately during COVID-19, we had a tremendous spike of opioid overdose deaths in Maryland, and we need to make sure that we continue that focus as we work through our COVID-19 recovery. I sponsored a bill that was approved that provided telehealth services, allowing alcohol and drug counselor trainees under supervision to continue to provide telehealth services after the governor lifts his emergency order. So this is going to be important, especially for those struggling with addictions who miss their in-person, they've had to do telehealth, and some of them are really benefiting from that, and we want to make sure they continue to have that option, whether it's telehealth or in-person. So I want to work with the council on that as well. Also, just wanted to briefly mention a couple of local bills that we worked on, was we did pass SB 715. That was the alcohol beverage bill that allowed for guests to enjoy alcohol beverages at golf courses, and that was something that was brought to our attention by the county executive and council, and also to allow alcohol sales on Sunday. Those were, we ended up combining those two bills and passing them through, and they were approved this session. And also one that many of you might recall, and I know our Speaker Pro Tem and Delegate Anderton were involved a couple of years ago with some of our school transportation issues that were raised, and we introduced a bill this year that moved forward that would allow the utilization of smaller vehicles rather than traditional school buses to benefit the educational needs of our students throughout the county, and we were successful in passing that bill, and it was a great bipartisan approach because we had, and a, and a regional approach, because we had Senator Edwards from Western Maryland saying it was a priority in his area, and Delegate Anderton moving it on the House side, and we had strong bipartisan support for the bill, and that did pass this session as well. So I just wanted to touch on those, and I know that some of our other members worked on priorities in their committees, but wanted to share that update. And I look forward to continuing to work with you, especially on COVID-19 recovery for our small businesses and in the telehealth and broadband areas.
Thank you, Senator Croza. Delegate?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. It's certainly a pleasure to be here and to be on this side of the table. It's been years. I won't respond to that one. But nonetheless, yes, we did have a unique legislative session this year. Just real briefly, we had two separate chambers that our members were on or in, and I led one of them with the speaker leading the other, but we were able to walk away from the session with everyone still healthy and no one being affected by COVID-19, because our members were going back and forth to their families as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. But we saw Mr. Roberts this morning. I want to jump to some bills you probably don't even get to hear of. I was talking about our dog and cats. If you're interested in expanding the court program, which is also your drug court program, but there is a bill that was passed, it was House Bill 186, that would allow a dog to be with a child if they need to be in the courtroom to help ease their anxiety or whatever the case may be, but that was one I thought was really interesting. And then another one that deals with the animals is that if we have an active person in the military that needs a dog or a cat, the fees can be waived by the Humane Society to try to help them through their times as well. So now I'll jump over just to a few bills that I would like to highlight. As you know, we were able to pass the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. We did tweak it a little bit because of the learning dysfunction or disruption that happened with COVID-19 to address the fact that students need that internet access, to address the fact that they may need additional tutoring and assistance. And so that particular bill really took it to the level of making sure that our young people educations are going to be neat, are going to be met, I should say. So you can certainly read further on that. That is House Bill 1372. We had a couple of other bills that deal with enabling legislation. If your county still chooses to provide a property tax exemption to our disabled active-duty service members and/or their surviving spouses, that is certainly something that you can take up. It's just, again, enabling legislation, but it's Senate Bill six, oh, excuse me, 269. We did make changes on our elections as far as the additional space that is needed for early voting. This county would be affected by having to open up one more voting site. The director of the election board did contact us and was not in favor of that bill, but the bill passed, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, that it may be something that would affect the budget. But that was House Bill 745. And also with the voting, we have a permanent absentee ballot that is now going to be in effect. That's House Bill 1048, which would allow persons to get a permanent absentee ballot and not have to sign up each and every time. This particular bill was in response to the fact that we did have a different way of doing the elections last year, and people were able to vote, but there are still issues when you have people in assisted living, nursing homes, they still have to find somebody to go figure out how to get them their absentee ballot. So this way, we could certainly help curtail that. The other ones that I'll just highlight for you is that now we are in a, you know, different space and time with the COVID, but we're still getting a lot of phone calls regarding unemployment. Unemployment has been challenging, I'll say. I've had to dedicate one particular staff person to just specifically deal with unemployment, and as you are aware, none of our staff work for unemployment, so they don't have access to the system. All they know is what they are hearing through the phone calls and what the needs are. So I just wanted to highlight that, to let you know that it's not over. We're still battling that, but we did pass many pieces of legislation this year to improve the system, because it's very much outdated. It wasn't prepared for us to deal with what we are, you know, currently dealing with at this time. The last bill that I'll just highlight for you at this time is the Police Reform and Accountability Act of 2021. You certainly probably heard a lot about the bill, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that this particular bill requires you as the county members to identify who you would like to serve on that particular board, and how many you would like to serve on that particular board. So that is within your jurisdiction and your decision as to what that looks like. There is one piece of that particular legislation that requires a trial board. The trial board is more prescriptive, where it has three persons. So I bring this up because I know there's a lot of conversation around the nation and locally, but also making you aware of what your, your charge is as a, as the county council, and to how you could certainly begin to prepare. And that was House Bill 670, in that certainly included the requirement of all officers to have body-worn cameras by 2025. We also put aside $10 million in that bill to have tuition for persons interested in going into law enforcement, so the law enforcement entity can look more and more reflective of the county in which they're serving. But certainly we are here to answer more questions, but I just want to make sure that you are aware of some of the things that would be required you to implement. But thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Delegate Adams?
Okay. Council President Dodd, Vice President Holloway, Wycomico County Council. Pleasure to be here, and I'll try to be brief. I know that you've got a schedule. First off, I just want to share with the council an exciting development during, at the end of session this year, our caucus had election for new leadership, and myself and Jason Buckle were elected as new leader and minority whip for the Maryland House of Delegates and the minority party.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. You know, the colleagues at the table here today were instrumental in helping me achieve that. That was a very political act and very interesting to be part of a, a secret ballot in trying to earn the support of the colleagues. So a couple of points I would share with you in my seven years, I believe, and hopefully my colleagues would say the same, is that I've earned the right to be heard on the House floor, that I try to bring debate on its merits to the House floor. We don't always win these issues, but, you know, I believe that over these seven years I've learned a lot and have, have shared that on the House floor. The other point that I would make to you, and Jason Buckle and I reinforced this during the election, is that Jason comes from Western Maryland, Allegheny County. I come from the, you know, the Chesapeake Bay and the Atlantic Ocean, the eastern shore, and so we bind our political principles around the idea that not everything is Republican versus Democrat, but quite often, and I think you'll agree, it does often come down to rural versus urban.
Yeah, right.
And so we intend on driving those conversations as a political party in the House of Delegates. It's where we can find political success and have found political success. I sit here today at the same table that our Speaker Pro Tem, who I intend to work very closely with, and would be very open to the county council, to know that, you know, politically we have to work together. We are one Maryland. We hear that quite often in the General Assembly, but we're not the same. We need to articulate what makes us different, unique, and why we need special attention as often as we can get it. That's my goal. Kathy Schalega was the prior minority whip. She and Nick Kipke did a wonderful job for seven years, leading a caucus. They left of their own volition, and so very exciting to follow Kathy Schalega. The last eastern shore whip was Jeanne Haddaway-Rickio, who's our current Department of Natural Resources Secretary. And the last Wycomico County whip was Lou Riley. So I take this job with a great degree of being humble, understanding the weight of the job and the importance of being a leader for our party during difficult times. You know, Delegate Mount sits next to me, so I'll be somewhat brief and, and leave him a lot of information to share with what we did on Economic Matters Committee, but I will touch on two issues briefly. You know, Speaker Pro Tem mentioned unemployment insurance. I was on the unemployment insurance subcommittee and worked directly on, I believe it was five bills, to make structural changes to our unemployment insurance system. Know that unemployment insurance is a federal program administered by each of the states, so there are federal requirements, federal responsibilities. However, we found through this pandemic that our systems were antiquated, and there, it left a lot to be desired. I don't blame the secretary, I don't blame the, blame the administration, but I do think it was the right of the legislature to make corrections where and how we could to fix that. On top of that, there were two bills, one related to income disregard, so as people are coming off of the unemployment rolls and back to work, we're still going to allow people to receive some income from unemployment insurance to bridge the gap. And then the other bill of some note is the fact that we're going to try to force through a better table. So know that unemployment insurance has Table A. We've always been under Table A as far as, as far as I've been an employer. We went to Table E, which is the highest series of rates within that classification during the pandemic. This is nothing more, nothing less than a tax on our employers, and so we have to fix that during the legislature. Senator Eckhart, Senator Hershey worked to pass a bill very late in session to force Table C, which is sort of the middle ground on that. So when that happens, hopefully we keep the burden on our employers, you know, to a minimum as we move forward. As an act of the caucus, we did write a letter to the governor asking for the reinstatement of work search requirements. This is a major issue for our employers right now. I sit next to Senator Croza, Delegate Hartman, who from Motion City are struggling to find people to code work at these jobs, and there can only be one conclusion, and that is that workers, when they're receiving unemployment benefits, when they don't have to seek work, when it's not a requirement, and that's always been the requirement of unemployment insurance, is we'll pay you the benefit, but you have to be actively looking for work. We got rid of that requirement during this pandemic, and so when you eliminate the work search requirement, people are receiving the benefit and without having to find ways off of unemployment insurance. people are receiving the benefit and without having to find ways off of unemployment insurance. So we were happy that the governor last week actually made an executive change and directed our Department of Labor to reinstate the work search requirements. That is mission critical for all our employers. As you know, I'm an employer myself and we see firsthand the difficulties in getting people to come to work. We're hiring. All I can tell you is most employers coming out of the pandemic are hiring and this should be easy button policymaking. Just briefly, I was on the work group for the Essential Worker Protection Act. Speaker Pro Tem knows this was a priority bill to help those that work during difficult times, during states of emergency, during the pandemic, to give them benefits as they're working through these difficult times. Through that work group, through Derek Davis, my chairman, Subcommittee Chairman C.T. Wilson, we heavily amended this bill. I'm sure Cherie, I'm sure the Speaker Pro Tem was involved in some of these negotiations, but we were able to eliminate some of the most onerous parts of that bill to the point where the Maryland Chamber of Commerce came in neutral on this bill, where they originally opposed it. So a couple of highlights on this. The bill is effective during what would be called the next catastrophic health emergency and only if the governor institutes the subtitle in the article. When that happens, there will be some changes and some benefits that employees get when they work in hazardous environments. But we fought very hard for agriculture, our poultry industry, where some of these requirements would have been completely untenable, could have driven many businesses out of business. So without going verbose on that, I think I'll pass the mic back and thank you, President Dodd, for the chance to speak as a group here today.
Yes, thank you. Delegate Mount.
Chairman Dodd and the members of the council, it's great to be with you.
You can pull that closer to you.
Sorry.
It'll reach.
Chairman Dodd, members of the council, it's great to be with you. Unfortunately, just about everything I was going to talk about has been discussed. So I'm going to share some things with you and I don't want to bore you. I did get a bill through this year that's really important. It caps the Renewable Portfolio Standard mandates for municipal utility companies. They're none in Wacomiko. Berlin has one, but it's going to make a big difference for them. The Renewable Portfolio Standard was increased a couple of years ago. The mandates are excessive for smaller utilities and they simply can't compete. They can't buy renewable energy at the volumes and at the price point of some of the bigger providers. Delegate Adams and I have served on Economic Matters Committee and I thought we had a deal and I was going to talk about unemployment and he was going to talk about essential workers. And he did such a good job with unemployment. I'll touch on it a little bit. I mean, we spent a lot of time on unemployment in the committee. Delegate Adams was on the work group on the Essential Employers Bill, which was a statewide crisis when it was introduced. It was, there was an alarm about this possibly becoming law. And through the process, through the work group, through our leadership, Speaker Pro Tem, the committee chairman, they really worked that bill and changed it. And they were able to come up with a product that was approved and is workable. The Chamber of Commerce was neutral on the bill ultimately when it passed. I still have reservations about the bill, but it got to a good place. Unemployment, it's a very different situation. And, you know, it, the problems that we're facing right now in unemployment are almost not fixable because we're in the middle of the situation. And, you know, there's, there are multiple influences. One influence is we need to get money to individuals who are unemployed as quickly as possible. They can't get into the beacon system. They can't get their benefits. They've been paying, you know, unemployment throughout their working career. And then on the flip side, we've got the situation where there are businesses that can't hire people right now because of unemployment benefits and there are businesses that are getting charged, unemployment charges, who are under the assumption that because of the legislation that was passed and the things that were done, and even some of the things that were said publicly that you would be held harmless have not played out to be true. The reality is both, trying to address both issues, you run into insurmountable obstacles. Getting money to individuals who are trying to apply, who are stuck in the system. The reality is in February, 80% of the unemployment claims filed in Maryland were flagged as being fraudulent. And 60% of that 80% actually turned out to be fraudulent. So if you expedite claims being paid, you're actually expediting the possibility for more fraud. And if you flip that around and look at the employers who are paying increased charges, they're paying increased charges because that trust fund's been depleted. And the fact of the matter is no way you color the situation, you know, bright or gray or whatever. That trust fund by federal law has got to be replenished. And so we're stuck in a spot right now. There is a bill that was approved that will move the repayment table from Table E to Table C. That came through our committee. It was put in by Senator Hershey, District 36. And that will move it in 2022. But in the short term, we're in a very precarious situation. And we did write a letter. There has been consensus about the return to work requirement. I know 18 states, I may be wrong, there may be more, but 18 states have blocked the extra $300 unemployment payment. That cuts different ways with different folks. But that still maintains, that will be a situation we're going to have to deal with throughout the summer. One thing that's really important to highlight, and it was kind of referenced earlier, but, you know, every year we go to Annapolis and every year we have priority concerns, typically with our agricultural community. And I think one big thing that did happen this session that needs to be emphasized is, you know, by having Delegate Adams as our whip and having Delegate Sample Hughes as our Speaker Pro Tem, one thing we always, the first question is, is what kind of influence do we have in Annapolis? Well, by doing that, you know, we know on the House side, at least one of the chambers, that Wacomiko County has got a direct line to the top. And that's very important, as you will recall from past years. But moving forward, I think it hasn't caught a lot of headlines, but that's going to benefit Wacomiko County. So it's a pleasure to be with you and I'll turn over the microphone. Thank you.
Can I say something about the unemployment?
Yeah.
Part of the problem was, in the middle of a pandemic, they changed their system. They revamped an entire system that was totally screwed up. And it's still not correct. That might where your fraud came in at because I contacted Cherie and I have drivers, bus drivers, and they were unable to get their benefits because of this new system that they put in. The system is totally screwed up. That's where your fraud's coming in. Because these people smarter than us that are able to circumvent the system and that's where you're getting it. But that's where they need to go into that system and monitor that system. Because just the other day, one of my drivers, they don't rechange it again. They don't put in all new questions again for these people to answer. And it's totally confusing.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Who do we have next? Delegate Hartman.
Well, thank you, sir. It looks like we're going by whoever represents the largest piece of Wacomiko County. So I'm fortunate to serve the, I have a small piece of the, sorry. I mean, it just, and speaking as to what Delegate Mount has said, you know, I'm down here scratching things off as we're going through and I don't know what I have left here.
But your face is redder than Senator Eckhart.
I will say Senator Eckhart did a great job with the budget. I think John did a great job with unemployment. In my district, I still have 51 cases that we're working on. That's not 51 people receiving. That's 51 people still having enough challenge to reach out to our office. We recently closed over 100 of those cases. The, I think the biggest part of the unemployment that we did was provide business relief as far as the rating. Johnny touched on that. Without what we did, even though the increases were just exorbitant, it would have been a lot, a lot worse. COVID relief and budget, I thought was going to take the whole session. Fortunately for the federal, for the federal funds, the budget worked out well. As Senator Eckhart had talked about, rural broadband continues to be a huge issue for many in the rural part of Wacomiko County. I just touched base with Chop Tank Electric on a particular case and I understand there's some issues between Chop Tank and Wacomiko County that I urge you to work through as far as the chicken and the egg, what comes first. I understand they, you would like to see some mapping and so forth with Chop Tank and they want you to...
Some new discussion with Chop Tank.
So I strongly, strongly encourage that to continue. So police reform is a big part of what I did with the minority caucus. It was sad to see what happened not too long ago with Corporal Heacock and hopefully we don't find members of law enforcement second guessing theirself. And it's just, it was a tragic situation. And the standards of the police reform are going to put our members of law enforcement to a superhuman standard where they're going to be scrutinized by a Monday morning quarterback. And I just encourage everyone, when you see members of law enforcement, to thank them for what they're doing and make sure they know they're appreciated. I did give you a copy of my end of session letter, so a lot of it's there. I had a bill after, the council here had passed the balloon release ban. That was something I had taken to the state level two years ago. Last year, because of COVID, session was cut short and that, the momentum of that bill was lost. This year with Senator Carosa, we were able to get that bill passed. So it was a lot of because of what you had did here in representing Wacomiko County and being the only delegate representing the Atlantic Coast. I thought it was important that I did that. So thank you for having that, initiating that first. Other legislation I worked on was a handgun permit for high-risk occupations, which would have included many members of first responders and things like that. It's outlined in the letter. I wanted to add first responders to the protected class under the hate crimes legislation. Unfortunately, we couldn't get either of those pieces of legislation out of committee. I do serve on Ways and Means, as was mentioned. So taxation, local revenues, Subcommittee is one of my subcommittees as well as education. So the bill, the Horizon bill, was part of the work in my committee. It's enabling legislation that allows you, the council, or the municipalities to act. So that was something that we had passed on behalf of Wacomiko County. The other bill is the Auction and Transportation Bill that was mentioned. That did come through my committee and Subcommittee and I was very involved in getting that done. I remember last year before COVID, that bill came in as a county bill and it was, it was so well received that it became a statewide bill. So again, it's something that initiated here that went statewide. So I think that about covers everything that wasn't covered already. And I think now we have Delegate Otto.
Thank you, Delegate Hartman. I appreciate the idea, but I was first elected in 2010. Wacomiko County played a big part in that. John will attest to that.
Sure.
So I appreciate being included continuously. And we don't know where the district's going to be next year. And that brings up the subject I'd like to talk about.
And we save the best for last.
That you have the plans in place and are planning on addressing redistricting promptly when we get the statistics from the Department of Commerce. That's going to be very important. And we're going to have our work cut out for us in January, probably, to go through the state districts and all. But your county is going to have to do it too.
Oh, yeah. We're going to discuss it later.
So that, all the issues were covered. I just want to remind everybody, this windfall and this lack of deficit budget came from the grandchildren in the federal government. $4 trillion pumped into the economy. And that's going to be, that's going to be a tax on our system and payrolls and this, that, and the other as inflation kicks in. Now, I had to prognosticate or I'd have thought we'd have seen more of it already. But I guess the cash is still flowing, so that's not happened yet. But, so keep your belts tight is what I'm saying. That's going to be a lot of issues we're facing. We had a lot of issues dealing with agriculture. One of them was conservation monies going to the cost share program at MDA. That was changed and tweaked, not a lot of additional money, but some projects that could be funded that weren't funded in the past or qualified.
Good to mention.
We had a big issues dealing with climate change. We had an 80-page bill come through and we had a single subject rule and it dealt with electric cars, it dealt with transportation, it dealt with building roads, it dealt with building standards. You know, it had about eight different statutes it dealt with, but it was all called climate change.
Right.
And that was changed substantially. It would have changed the way we live significantly. Not with incentives, but with hammers and enforcement. So, well, one of them would require you to buy electric school buses. And that is transitioning to that too. But nothing wrong with it. We had, there was some good things in it. And unfortunately, it died in the Senate. Because, our Sunday Hunting Bills died in the Senate because of this changes into the climate change bill that we actually made it almost acceptable. But, so it's been a challenging year and hopefully I'm glad to come to a meeting that I can see you face to face and not on a Zoom screen.
Absolutely.
So I'm glad for the work that you've done this past year and keep up the good work and reach out to the citizens.
Delegate Otto, it's always a pleasure to have you join us. Council, do we have any comments with the delegation? Delegate, yeah, Councilman Hastings.
Well, first of all, it's good to see the bottom half of everybody's faces. This is the first time any of us have been in a meeting without a mask, so, and together. My thoughts on, first of all, thank you for the override for disparity grants. That's a big issue. No matter what way you cut it, most any metric, Wacomiko County is a top five county when it comes to poverty and to the issues of poverty and all that goes around in combined with that. So what I would love to hear from you is, what's our, what's our look going forward for, say, 2020, you know, 2023, 2024, beyond? What does the budget look like us? How much are we going to, anything you want to say there? Are we going to continue to need disparity grant in the future? Is that going to be there? Do you anticipate that? And I open it to any, whoever else wants to.
I think a lot of that is going to depend over the next couple of years, how we address the issues with the COVID funds, the money that is coming down. We, I think we just got that official word of the funds that you'll be getting. My understanding was there was going to be additional. How that's used, how you handle your budgeting is going to be really important going forward. And we will continue to do our very best, but structurally for the next two years. Now, I think the disparity grants by that legislation do go, yeah, they go down just a little bit, but then they're permanent for now. I mean, I think we convinced everybody and because of the pandemic, you know, all of that was aggravated. Now, what we will be fighting about in the future because one of the issues between mass transit and highway user funds has come up again. And I know we said on our committee, we're going to be putting a work group together to be able to look at how we find a sustainable source of funding for either one or the other of those or both. So, you know, I could resurrect my previous senator's way of dealing with that and that may be one of the possibilities. But we will be looking at that going forward. So I think it's really important to stay, be aware of your budget implications going forward. I think Kerwin is going to be the other piece, you know, that is going to be a heavy lift for many and how you're able to work through your existing organizations to capitalize and use all available funding in a very efficient way to address things like health and wellness, particularly dealing with our minority populations. Because you all have quite an extensive network of folks here who have not had a lot of access to care. And that's going to be really important, how those organizations are put in place to be able to address those needs going forward.
If I could just elaborate real briefly. The capital funds were in a different position this year, given the fact that we had so much federal funds come in. We were able to take care of a lot of our capital projects, maybe like a one-time, you know, occurrence. So that, to me, is beneficial, where we can look to that end. The other area I think that you will need to really look going out is the funding of your community college. This year, the governor provided a budget that would have cut the community colleges. We were able to restore their funding. So they are in a much better position now. We were able to restore their funding. So, they are in a much better position now. But years down the road, we're going to have to really see what that looks like. Because the other piece is that we did pass legislation on collective bargaining, and I certainly know that Dr. Hoy can give you the whole specifics on that. But I did speak with them prior to voting, and that was what they were in favor of this year. But long-term, you want to need to probably get in your, on your radar screen, that that may be an area that may need to prepare in advance of funding, and see what that looks like. Because collective bargaining, I think it's required like 2023, I believe, but that's something that you'll need to look at as a council.
All right. Thank you. Warwick is very important to Wycomico County, so thank you for supporting that. That was a good question. Councilman, Councilman Cannon?
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate having everyone here today. You know, this is a very good group. It's a pro-business group. We know it's a pro-agriculture group. That's important. That's important to Wycomico County and this council as a whole. I'm also glad to see that you, each of you helped us, you know, sort of hold off the headwinds of the turmoil from a national level. I'm glad to see that, you know, we don't get embroiled, you know, caught up in all of that at some point in time, that Maryland seemed to be rather reserved in its approach. More locally, Mary Beth, you made a very good point. Broadband is very critical to Wycomico County. I think that's important to keep pursuing that. Tri County is helping to make those inroads, and funding is coming in from Maryland broadband. But again, getting that last mile, getting things where they really need to be. It's so important now. It used to be all considered economic development. It's economic development, it's education now as well, which is even more important.
And health.
Yes, and health, of course, is always there. I appreciate the fact that it was mentioned. Sri, you mentioned as far as Kerwin was concerned, because that's important as well, that we try to see how we're going to be able to maintain that funding as time goes on. And another one of my notes was Warwick Community College. That is probably one of the most important responsibilities we have on a state level. Ray Hoy is in the trenches daily in Annapolis, and he is taking, I think he's, unfortunately, I think he has to spend more time in Annapolis lobbying for his community college than actually in Wycomico County running his college. It's very unfortunate. And, you know, hopefully, at some point in time, the state will recognize the importance of community colleges everywhere in the funding. Workforce development is everything, and it's more, as Delegate Adams said, it's rural as well. And it's so more, so much more important in a rural community that you get workforce development in order to grow the economy. Something else I would want to point out to you, you know, in some of the volunteer fire meetings that we've attended, recruitment is down extremely. You know that the funding is down, without a question, just because of the fact they couldn't have any events over the last year. But recruitment is down as well. And somehow or other, in listening to these discussions at these local levels, you know, it came to my realization that I think the state needs to start to address this. How they're going to maybe better create funding, or your tax incentives, or any other type of incentives for local recruits, because the astronomical amount of costs that we're going to incur, if we lose our volunteer force, our budgets will be upside down in Wycomico County. So, however you may want to begin to implement some type of continued incentives for recruiting volunteers in that field, that would be great. Continue with the airport, if you could, and talking to the governor, and trying to make sure that we work on a federal level, so that everything is moving forward, not only with the regulations, but the funding. Tony Rudy's doing an excellent job. We're up against the FAA almost every day, so however much pressure the state can help put on it would be wonderful. And finally, I'd say law enforcement. We really appreciate the fact that I know that this delegation supports law enforcement. Wayne, you had mentioned it as well. It's critical, and we don't want to lose recruitment in law enforcement either. We want to create incentives, actually, for these individuals to go out and risk their lives, and their families, their families, every single day. We need to make sure that we show our support for them emotionally and financially. And I'm glad, again, that we have such a great delegation in Annapolis, at least, supporting those efforts, because I know each and every one of you do. So, I'll wrap up with that.
If I could add something?
Yes.
Thank you. I mentioned, in Worcester County, there are many of our agencies, as I'm sure here, are in need of additional law enforcement. And one thing we may want to do on the eastern shore is collectively advertise on the western side of the bridge, that, you know, the eastern shore loves law enforcement, and list the agencies that are hiring, and, you know, start a campaign for recruiting law enforcement for here, from the western side. And I just, you know, encourage you to reach out to our neighboring counties. Melanie Purcell is very open to the idea in Worcester County. Pokimoke, I know, is in great need. Ocean City, Worcester County Sheriff's, I know.
Off the bar.
You know Wycomico County. So, a collective effort. I think we could make some good of what happened with police reform. So, just hopefully you can pursue that.
And I see that delegates, Moutsen, Otto are wearing their pin, supporting police. Appreciate that. Thank you. Counsel, any more comments for the delegation?
Thank you all for being with us.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right. I do have a quick question, and I guess Speaker Protem can answer it. I was thinking while we were talking about seeing the faces, what about discussion on next session? Is there a discussion on having it open already?
Thank you for the question, President. So, you know, what we did do, and the speaker, this is at the speaker's direction, but when we were divided, we had a separate chamber that had plexiglass, and everybody was secured at their desk. So, I think the media recently had asked her what we were going to do, where we're going to keep this. And she said, for right now, there's so much change occurring, we didn't know which way to go. So, for that, from that perspective, we kept our little desk with the plexiglass and the separation, just because we don't know what it looks like two months from now, or even in November, if we were to reconvene to deal with redistricting. So, right now, we don't know specifically what that looks like, but certainly we want to make sure all of our members are together, because I think that certainly we get more done, and it's more, they can be there to stand on the floor and speak their mind right then and there, without waiting for me to recognize them. So, we know that we're going to have to just see what that looks like closer to us reconvening. So, can't give a definitive statement right now.
If I could respond on the Senate side, there was a real drawback not having the hearings in public, and having the Zoom hearings. So, there will continue to be a push to, obviously, with health and safety protocols, but to open that back up. You know, we would have these hearings, and you would not really have full, you would only have limited testimony. And even though it was accessed by the public, and anyone could send in written testimony, the bottom line is, you would then go to committee, and, you know, you'd have a situation where, well, you know, let's move this bill, because, you know, nobody testified against it. And then if, you know, if you were paying attention, and you pulled the file out, I'd say, well, wait a minute, we have, we've got, you know, 10 organizations that sent in written opposition, and we didn't have the opportunity to hear them in person, so we need to go through their concerns before we would move any legislation. My point is, I think we need to continue to push for more of this type of back-and-forth, and, you know, again, under health and safety protocols, and some of us are going to keep pushing for that.
Yes. Thank you, Senator. Delegate?
And just briefly, I'll, look, as the minority whip, we have a two-to-one disadvantage in the House of Delegates. Our voice on the House floor is so important, and it's so instrumental in being able to try to win some of these debates on their merits. So, as Senator Croz has said, I think we need to push to be able to make sure that, to the extent that we can, we're together. The positive, let me say, this is a big positive, and we saw it this year, was the fact that we are showing live streaming of the session on the House floor. And they've gotten pretty good with that. I mean, the point-counterpoint, allowing citizens to go online and watch what's actually happening on the House floor, in my seven years, is unprecedented. But let me just say that I think that, as a member of the minority party, that the transparency, the openness of debate matters, and I think that we continue that, to just echo what Senator Croz has said. Committee work is where so much of the policymaking actually happens. And we lost, in my opinion, a lot of our ability to influence outcomes in our committees without actually being together. Now, I'm not talking about just me and Johnny. I'm talking about me and C.T. Wilson, or me and the chairman, and, you know, Courtney Watson, you name it. In our committee, we are very collegial, and we're also very effective in being able to articulate points during the committee. Once they come out of committee, for the most part, these bills, they will pass the House floor. So, you know, the debate on the House floor is what it is. And so, my hope is that we really reinforce the idea that we want to get back to business as normal in the committee process.
If I could interject very quickly, though, could there be a small silver lining? I would never be one to advocate for Zoom meetings, because I've hated the whole year. But I was wondering, could there be a silver lining to this, whereas testimony could be by Zoom, continue on the process? Could we have found something? Because I think each of you are aware, especially when there were a lot of agricultural issues in Wycomico County, we'd have people that were going up to testify. They'd get there at, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon. They wouldn't get home until midnight. And it seems like such a disservice to those people that wanted to testify, and many wouldn't go. So, would there be a balance that you could create, so that you could accept, do you think that the committees might accept Zoom meetings or Zoom input? You know?
Well, we did Zoom hearings, but I think what we would want to do is broaden the number who, you know, the number that testify, you know, maybe open that up more. So, I think just, we understand your point, and I want to be clear that the transparency with having the public, you know, be able to see the hearings and the floor proceedings was a benefit. But the limitations to the Zoom hearings did, I believe, limit some of the work we could do after the hearing. So, I think we can make adjustments to.
And it's only for testimony, not for members of the committees, of testimony?
So, Councilman, let me, I feel like I want to share here, and I don't want to take the microphone. I believe there was less engagement from the citizens because of Zoom. It's not that it wasn't more accessible, and of course, you're in government, so you're more engaged and aware of what's going on. But the truth of the matter is, the in-person hearings solicit people's attendance. They listen to both sides. They present in a formal, in a in-person fashion, like we're doing here today. So, the only comparison I would lay out is that when we were here last fall, we were doing this virtual. It's not the same.
Right.
And we do not want to, in my opinion, add to it. Now, what I do think is Zoom's here to stay. I think that Johnny and Addy and I will likely try to figure out, because we have such a large district, how could we do things in a more productive fashion, but not to the level where we're trying to pass Maryland state law. And I hope, I hope we don't continue what we did last year. I hope that's a one-year thing. That's Chris Adams talking, and I think.
I understand that as well.
I think what you're getting at is, right, exactly. We're meeting in person, sitting at the committee room again, like normal, and people who want to come up and testify in person do so. But then, there's an option for those who don't want to drive over from here and sit there till midnight. They can just Zoom. There are screens in the committee rooms, and I think that's the way to get, I mean, you could quadruple your public engagement then, if somebody knows they have the option of just testifying via Zoom versus driving up, sitting in a committee room for six hours. I think it's a great idea.
And I think it's a great idea, too, but I think there should be limitations, because you mentioned it being personal, face-to-face. I agree with that, but I think you'll see a lot of people take advantage of the Zoom meetings when they really should be there in person, but the options should be available. But workout limitations.
Let me say this. The leadership of the House and the Senate will convene to take all of suggestions, and see what worked and what didn't. The other benefit to this is that the testimony, if you are for it or against it, was provided for you as a legislator to, and to the public, two days in advance. We didn't have that before. In my committee, Health and Government Operations, I had more people from the eastern shore testify than ever. So, you have some benefits, and you have some disadvantages. But ultimately, we will take the guidance of our health officials when we do convene, and decide what we can safely do. But prayerfully, we won't have another issue like this.
Yes.
But we did have to take measures that were uncomfortable to keep everybody safe.
Right. And thank you for those considerations, too. I do have one more thought. It's not a question. Speaker Protem mentioned House Bill 745 with the elections, and Mr. Gutierrez opposed it. He spoke with us at the last meeting, and the reason he opposed it is because of the limit, the magic number. We're just right over that, and to open another polling center really doesn't make fiscal sense. So, I hope that you would consider possibly waiving that for Wycomico County. Don't know if it can be done, but maybe the option will be there for that, so.
And send out, send that, that's an amendment, so that maybe we can introduce it.
Okay. I appreciate it.
We did try to address that bill, and it was in Ways and Means, but it obviously did pass, because it certainly had the number of votes it needed to. But amendment is an option. I certainly made the chair of the committee aware that Wycomico had issues with it. But then, we have to look at things statewide. Other jurisdictions were begging for another polling site, because they need it because of their capacity. So, to that end, there's still work to be done. That's why we have another session. We can certainly do our best to amend that bill.
Appreciate you listening to that. Any more questions or comments for the delegation?
If I?
Go ahead, Senator.
Can I just say something?
Yes, ma'am.
As you go through your county plan and your county priorities, keep us engaged in that, so that we know projects that are important to you. I know I grilled all of the wastewater treatment initiatives that were going on around the state. We also looked for a number of, occasionally I'll get a request for arts projects, wastewater treatment, park kinds of things. So, keep us in the loop with what kinds of things you're dreaming about and thinking about down the road, because as the opportunity presents itself, we want to be able to jump on it.
On the front end.
On the front end, and be able to advocate. So, I think that's going to, and also, the issues that the county faces with regard to broadband. We put in a bill, and I jumped on a bill with my colleagues, because I thought there needed to be a comprehensive structure that dealt with all of broadband, the devices, the cost, all of it. So, we worked together to be able to make that happen, with the assurance we would keep the integrity of the rural piece of it. So, but as things are happening, just keep us in that loop.
We will, because countywide water and sewer and broadband is so important to us. Delegate?
Yeah, I wasn't going to talk. Just very quickly, one aside, though, you know, Zoom is here to stay, and, you know, we do these meetings, and it takes a lot of planning to do the meetings. You can easily do a Zoom meeting and do a briefing or something, so you don't have to have an official meeting to do, just to sort of keep the flow of communication and keep everybody up to speed. I think this year is going to be unlike past years. It's going to be very busy. There are going to be a lot of bills. A lot of bills got approved last year. They didn't go through the normal process. Things happen. There are going to be a lot of things going on. And so, don't be, I would encourage you not to run away from Zoom. That's an easy way to try to keep ahead of the curve, and that's only going to help.
That option's available for the council, so thank you.
And that's something, I just have a quick question. That's something Delegate Anderson and I discussed, having a process for how we are going to address enabling state legislation in the future. So, that would be good to work that out.
Thank you, Ms. Hackley. Mr. Holloway?
Delegate Moutsen, I suppose about 120 years ago, they were having the same conversation about whether to use a telephone to communicate amongst elected officials. So, you know, time moves on, right?
What was your decision on that, Joe?
I'm not, I can say that, because we're about the same area.
All right. With that said, we want to thank you all for attending, and it was awesome. Do you have any more comments before? Okay, you were beaten on the table, so I thought maybe you had something. So, thank you for everything you do, and thank you for keeping us up to date.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley?
The next one for businesses, resolution number 53-21, authorizing the acting county executive to reallocate funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act grants, approved by resolution number 47-2020, to parking lot repair, building repair, replacement of air traffic control tower equipment, and snow removal and mowing equipment. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, the airport manager.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Need a motion to approve resolution number 53-2021?
To move.
Got a motion, and the second, Mr. Cannon, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of resolution number 53-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 53-2021 passed unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next is the submission of the reappointment to the Next is the submission of the reappointment to the Wycomico County Airport Commission and an appointment to the Animal Appeals Board. The Acton County Executive has submitted, in accordance with Charter Section 315 and Section 5 dash 4 of the County Code, an appointment to the Airport Commission. The Airport Commission acts in an advisory capacity. They review and make recommendations to the airport manager and the county executive with respect to all matters of the airport. The Acton County Executive has also submitted, per Charter Section 315 and Section 133 dash 27 of the County Code, a reappointment to the Animal Appeals Board. The board makes advisory recommendations regarding changes, implementation, and administration of the animal control laws of the county, as well as the schedule of fines. They also hear and decide appeals made by the Animal Control Authority concerning the classification of an animal as potentially dangerous or dangerous. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for appointments to the boards and commissions.
Ms. Hurley, will you read those items on the consent agenda?
We have resolution number 54 dash 2021. This is confirming the reappointment of John T. Cannon to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. Resolution number 55 dash 2021, confirming the appointment of Linda W. Mills to the Animal Appeals Board.
Right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda for the boards and commissions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. The consent agenda passed unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next for your consideration is resolution number 56 dash 2021. This is making a supplemental appropriation, the amount of $70,000 from the contingency account to the extrarial contractual account. CBIZ provides financial consultant services to the county for the pension plan, and the unanticipated cost this year will exceed what was originally budgeted by $70,000. And we do have Ms. Jackie Curry here, the Human Resource Director, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve resolution number 56 dash 2020.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of resolution number 56 dash 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 56 dash 2021 passed unanimously. At this time, we need to adjourn from the legislative session and convene the local Board of Health. Do you have a motion?
To move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we are in the local Board of Health, and we have with us Ms. Lori Brewster.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will say it is really good to see everybody's smiling face and actually seeing the bottom part of your face. We have a lot going on in public health, as you are well aware of, but I wanted to touch on a number of items other than COVID, since we have talked about a lot of COVID activities over the past year. We will touch briefly on that. Under behavioral health, which is one of the three priority areas that our community has been working on, as you heard, overdoses and overdose deaths continue to rise in our community, which is of great concern. On the agenda, I did list the last report that came out for calendar year 2020. Our number of overdose deaths for 2020 rose by eight, which was a 27.6% increase over 2019. I will say that the increase in overdose deaths did not begin until quarter two, which was when COVID began, and we have seen and heard from individuals that have had non-fatal overdoses that the social isolation and inability to access treatment has contributed to their drug use. We also have seen a decline in emergency EMS transport to the hospital, as well as a decline in emergency department visits, even though the numbers of overdoses are increasing. So to address some of this, we have done a series of media releases, and we have reacted our COAT team commercials so that people know that they have access to services in the community. On a similar note, mental health issues, we're seeing an increase in depression and other mental health issues. But I will say it's of the opinion in the community that suicides are up, and they are actually down, which is a good thing. But again, most of the increases in mental health issues are related to the social isolation. And we know that some of our older individuals that need services prefer face-to-face services, and they have been receiving telehealth services over the past year, and we're hopeful that we can get them back into treatment. One of the other areas that we are working on with our Local Health Improvement Coalition is our diabetes engagement. We did receive some funding from the Maryland Healthcare Commission for academic detailing related to diabetes. And basically, what that entails is an individual going into physicians' offices, trying to link, get them to link individuals up with services in the community related to diabetes, whether that is for prevention purposes or for treatment purposes. There's been a lot of funding in the past for prediabetes, but we, as a public health group, have been very lax on the ability to receive funding for actual treatment, and many individuals, particularly of Medicare age, have difficulty accessing some of the supplies that they need for diabetes treatment. We also are continuing with our Walk Wycomico. Even through the pandemic, we were pushing, getting out and walking as an activity that was social-distanced, so to speak, and, and good for individuals. Cancer is another priority, and over the course of the pandemic, we have seen a decline in individuals getting the screening for various types of cancer. So we're trying to engage individuals in both colorectal and breast cancer screenings, because those are a couple of the two highest in our community. I'm going to move down the agenda, and I'll touch on COVID last. We are getting ready to embark with Peninsula, Title Health, Peninsula Regional, and Nanokoke on our three-year Community Health Needs Assessment, which is required for them under the IRS rules and required for us under our accreditation. We have just contracted with a company that did our last Community Health Needs Assessment, so you all will be hearing about that as we move throughout this calendar year. We are also at the Health Department, continuing our work on quality improvement, requiring each and every one of our staff members to be trained on what is quality improvement and what do we need to do as a health department to look at our services in a manner which will improve the quality of the public health of the citizens. And then finally, we have brought on some training for our staff on cultural competency, and we are making that a mandatory training for all of our Health Department employees. So COVID, our positivity rate is below five. And if you had asked me this time last year if it would get below five, I probably would have told you no, because we were in the twenties. Yesterday, our positivity rate was 4.3%, with the statewide percentage at 2.51 for the seven-day average. Our case rate is below 10. Yesterday, it was 7.17 per 100,000. Vaccine delivery, back in December, when we first started receiving vaccine, we couldn't get it fast enough to be able to give it out. And we have seen, with all of the availability of vaccine in our community at physicians' offices, pharmacies, and of course, the mass vaccination clinic, a decline in individuals' desire to be vaccinated. You may or may not have seen the commercial that was done by Wycomico and Somerset County Health Department as to why people need to get vaccinated. We have a 47% of the population that's 16 and older have been vaccinated. I know that some of the media outlets were reporting 35%, but that's of the total population, and the total population isn't eligible for vaccine because 0 to 12 are not eligible at this point. We are trying to address vaccine hesitancy in various populations. We are part of the Vulnerable Populations Task Force in the county.
Mr. Holloway, did you have a question? I thought you were getting ready to stop her.
I wouldn't dare. I would ask later, after you got done with the COVID, but in vaccines, has there been any talk of booster shots, like next year, the year after? Have you heard any conversations about that?
There's conversations about that ongoing, and we're waiting from the manufacturers of the vaccine to determine what length of time they're looking that we will need boosters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway.
As you all know, the age 12 to 16 vaccine has opened up, and Title Health is working with the school system to provide that, the immunizations for that age range. It's only open for the Pfizer vaccine. Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson has not opened up to individuals under the age of 18 yet. We have been doing a lot of work in the community with some of the churches in areas where we know that there's significant vaccine hesitancy. We are also going to be part of the opening of the Resource Center for the Haitian population, which is on May 23rd. We are going to be doing some significant education with that population because there is significant vaccine hesitancy with them. And I have been working with Senator Caroza on a plan that I'm trying to convince the state that we need to do, which is working with individuals that will register for vaccine, and we would deliver the vaccine at the Shorebird Stadium in exchange for tickets to the Shorebirds game. The federal dollars that have come in for COVID vaccine are not eligible for incentives, so we are trying to find some funding that would be available for incentives such as that. And the mass vac sites, the population seeking vaccine is dwindling, so they are downsizing a couple of the mass vaccination sites. The one in Salisbury is one of those that we'll be downsizing, and it looks like the Health Department will be moving back into the Civic Center at some point in the near future to work with the mass vac site.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Do we have any more questions or comments for Ms. Brewster?
I have a few.
A few?
And these are, these are citizen, citizen questions. And I appreciate everything that you have done, especially with the Diabetes Initiative. I think it's something that's very much needed. Do you see that continuing virtually in the future? I know you've had to go to a virtual platform, but there has been increased, increased participation, but new participation?
So I think we will probably do a hybrid. We know that there are people that it has worked for being virtual, but we also know that it's, it's best for some people to be part of a group. So I think we will probably try to do a hybrid approach so that we can access services for everyone.
And then, do you know if Title Health will be working with the private schools or independent daycares?
I have not heard if they are or not. I am trying to access Pfizer vaccine with the mass vac clinic so that we can address some of those issues. The mass vaccination clinic, as it dwindles its numbers, they are looking to do some mobile outreach, so I will bring that up as a, as a necessary group that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Ms. Earl Holloway?
The matter of vaccinating in schools, how they will have to have parents' permission.
They have to have parents present.
Present.
Yes.
That's even better.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right. Mr. Cannon?
Yes, I had a couple questions. Thanks for being here today. And thank you also, every chance we get, as far as what you're doing with the COVID issues, what you've done for the, with the COVID issues for this county and for Somerset as well. And you've done a great job in the opioids as well, because everybody knows how great a job you were doing before COVID hit on addressing opioid issues and will continue to persevere, I'm sure. The one, the question I have, which comes up a lot from the council, is in reference to the environmental health services. You know, Secretary Grumbles was here about a month or so ago, probably about two months ago, from the Maryland Department of the Environment, to listen to the council's concerns from constituents. Since that time, some of us have met through the Coastal Association of Realtors with the Assistant Secretary Suzanne Dorsey. She was nice enough to come down as well. So I think they're recognizing the concerns that we have as far as trying to implement proper processes and procedures for the citizens of the, of the county, knowing full well that we have Worcester County right next door, we have Sussex County next door, and we're trying to make sure that the environmental health in Wycomico County is as efficient as possible. How, how are we as far as that's concerned? I think some of the consensus that might have been that there was a staffing issues there. I don't know if we've hired a new director of environmental health yet, and the outreach efforts, I think, is, is something else that was considered a concern.
So right now, we have an interim director who is Dan Williams. He is a retired individual that came from Calvert County, and he has a lot of background in environmental health. He is an environmental health specialist by licensure. He and our health policy analyst is working on a frequently asked questions component on our website. We know that for the general public, it would be helpful for them to understand if you want to have onsite septic, what are the steps that you're going to have to go through? So they're working on that, as well as publishing our numbers on our website of how long processes take. So we're, we're trying to get that information readily available to the public moving forward. As far as staffing goes, we just hired a new individual as a trainee, and we're working with him, getting him up to speed to help move our department forward. We are not unlike the rest of the state with recruitment of environmental specialists. Very frankly, the pay in public health and environmental health is not great if you can go to the private sector and do similar work and make a whole lot more money. So we have seen people, or even leave to go to, across the state line to Delaware, where they're paying better. So we interviewed, or had seven people on the application list from the state, and we had two that decided that they wanted an interview, and we hired one and were working on the other.
With the, with the pay, because everybody always gets mixed up on, it's the Wycomico County Health Department, but the good portion of it is state, state-funded and state-run. So as far as that funding is concerned for environmental health, how much of that is shared with the county, or is it completely 100% state? I believe the director's a county employee. Is that correct?
No. All of our environmental health staff are state employees.
Okay.
And the. And the county funds the salaries of the employees in environmental health along with our fees, but we are required to stick to the pay scale that is provided by the State Department of Budget and Management. So if I wanted to increase their salaries, I would not be able to.
And if there would be that recommendation, I mean, would that have to come from the, our acting county executive in the council to recommend to the state? Not often do we recommend to the state to take on more expenses, but would that be something that we would be, we would need to do?
Well, the health officers have requested what's called an annual salary review of that, those classifications and with COVID and some of the finance issues, that's been delayed at this point, but we have made that request.
Well, I think, and I couldn't speak for anybody else here, but I think with the ordeals that we've witnessed over several years, I would think that the, I would hope that the council as a body would recognize possibly if that were to be a solution to maybe help try to move forward with increasing some type of pay structure for environmental health to get it back in line if that seems to be the sole issue that's of concern.
I can't say that's the sole issue as far as hiring. The other issue is, if you recall, the university previously had an environmental health studies program and that's where we got the bulk of our staff from. We were able to get individuals that met the specifications for an environmental specialist. The program no longer exists, so our pipeline for access to individuals that meet the qualifications is, has dwindled.
Would we be in a position where we could contract out some of this work for licensed contractors that, you know, to get, you know, create some relief for your staff?
So the health department has a delegation agreement from the Department of the Environment, so we would be limited in how we could contract out those services without the approval of the Maryland Department of the Environment.
Great, thank you.
As you mentioned that Salisbury State had dropped their program, has there ever been any conversations with Warwick about possibly doing a program like that?
Warwick's programming, I don't believe, would be, give them the eligibility to sit for the exam. Now, I have met with the group at SU about increasing the number of programs that they could, or classes that they could offer so that the individuals would be eligible even if they didn't have a degree program. So we have been out in the past years, meeting with students that are in some of the biological sciences and chemistry majors to see if we could try to recruit them early on into the environmental health world.
Good question. Any more questions or comments for Ms. Brewster? I'm looking at the 20th Annual Tobacco and Other Drugs Award Ceremony, June 1st. Is that still virtual?
As far as I know, right now, we're still doing things that are virtual, not knowing where we'll be the next month as far as our positivity rates, but I am in a full belief that we are over the hump, so to speak. I do believe we'll see a fifth wave of COVID. Not real sure when that will be, but if we can get people vaccinated, we can get back to business as usual. The State Department of Budget and Management just did a survey of all state agencies on how they would operate business going forward, if they would continue teleworking. Let me just say that for the most part, many, many, many of my staff have been reporting to work since day one of the pandemic. We, unlike some of the other jurisdictions, did not stop some service, some essential services, such as our environmental health services. We were one of the only counties that were fully operational with environmental health throughout the pandemic, as well as some of our other services. You probably know that our building is not open to the public. I have been asking the Department of Budget and Management, may I open the building back up to the public because it would make our lives much easier? And I have not received an answer to that yet because they have to work through the department to determine when we can physically open up to the public. But our services have remained operational either through telehealth or through curbside services.
Like all of Wycomico County has. And as you can see through the previous session with the delegation, many of us are really looking forward to meeting face-to-face like we used to and that's why I asked about the virtual meeting. And then, I know Mr. Holloway has a question, but you asked about, or you mentioned walk Wycomico and I do want to point out that ever since COVID, some of these stores like Walmart have had a difficulty trying to keep bikes in stock. So it's probably a good thing that people are getting out there and staying active.
Absolutely.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes. Getting back to environmental health, at one time, there was discussions about a septic system that would, you would separate the, what do you call it, the black water from the wastewater to alleviate as much issues with a regular septic system. Is anything going on with that?
So not that I'm aware of at this point. That would be an MDE ruling moving forward and please understand that I'm not an environmental specialist, so I could not answer some of the technical questions related to environmental health, but I can certainly talk with our representative that we're working with at MDE and get back to you if you would like.
So what are the, do you do know the names? I know one's called black water, what's the other? Gray water, gray water and black water?
Correct.
Washer water and dishwashing liquid is different than the other?
Correct.
So that would alleviate a lot of the pressure on some of the septic systems that they could, I know they talked about it before.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments?
One more quick question.
Exactly.
Do you, how do you foresee moving forward the mask mandate on summer camps, outdoor sports?
So they are revising the mask mandate on schools as well as youth sports and summer camps. My understanding, I have not seen the guidance yet, but for youth sports, it will not be required for outdoors. Will be required indoors still. And youth camps, the same thing, that if they're outdoors, it will not be required, but indoors it would be.
All right. Ms. Brewster, I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us, give us a report on the health of Wycomico County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this time, a motion to adjourn from the local board of health and reconvene into the legislative session.
移到
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I want to recognize one of our former council members, the council president, Mr. Tony Sarbain. Thank you for being in attendance. Now it's time for public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to the council members. If so, include 10 copies. And again, no derogatory comments, personal attacks, et cetera. So if we have any public comments?
Steve Miller.
Do we have any public comments? All right, council comments?
I was going to ask Steve Miller if he could give us a moment. I've been getting some questions about, Steve, hate to put you on the spot, but I've been getting a lot of questions about the Wycomico County Fair. You know, it's time for people to start planting their vegetables. Can you give us an update on when it is and, if you don't mind? I didn't mean to put you on the spot here, but it's crossed my mind, so.
Yeah, we've been planning for a reduced attendance fair all through the winter, not knowing what the guidance would be. So at this point, with the guidance changing, we're kind of monitoring that, but we do plan to have an in-person fair. It's the third weekend of July or August, which I don't know the exact date, but give me one second.
Anything we can make of?
It's the weekend of 2021, '22, so we are intending to have a fair. The attendance, and we're going to work with Ms. Brewster on what the guidance is as to whether or not that would be restricted or how we would work through that.
So if people want to put entries in, who would they contact now at this time?
So they should be on the website, I think it's WycomicoCountyFair.org.
Okay.
Yeah, and folks can help them out.
Okay, all right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Not public comments, but council comments at this time. Mr. Cannon?
Right, I'd only say that I'd like to, again, Diana and Jeff Merritt, they're still doing great things for Wycomico County. And was able to attend this past weekend, I was able to attend a packaging party, I don't know what you'd call it, it's like a party, we had a great time, but put together over 440 packages to go out to the troops, which was absolutely great.
For the troops.
For the troops, yeah. So it was, it was a lot of fun. I appreciate the invitation from Operation We Care and also thanks go out to Mardella Volunteer Fire Company because they allowed us to use their facility for that. So again, they're doing really, really good work and I think any time you get a chance to recognize Jeff and that organization, it's always worthwhile, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Just speaking on the Mardella side, my brother let me know Mardella is having its very first ever track meet, ever. Thanks to the council and the previous county executive, we actually have a track there. So for all the fellow warriors out there, it's pretty awesome to be able to have a track.
That's great news. Any more council member comments? All right, time for president comments. I was told to let everyone know the Charter Review Committee will be meeting this Thursday, May 20th at 6:00 PM in the Flanders Room. We also mentioned earlier that the Firemen's Association has their meetings and one will be tonight, I think it's at 7:00 PM in Parsonsburg. And I do want to thank the council members that attended Corporal Heacock's funeral this past May 10th, Monday. It was really great to see the community coming together in both states. We saw congressmen, senators from both states, state delegations, the governors and to our council members, thank you for showing your support to one of our public safety officials. So with that said, need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the General Provisions Article, Section 3-305B1, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to independent legal counsel and to protect the confidentiality of the individuals. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So at this time is 12 o'clock. Ms. Harley, I think it's do a work session before we just leave for lunch.
That's entirely up to you. I mean, I don't think the two work sessions that are scheduled before lunch will take very long.
Okay.
Let's knock them out.
Let's do it then. So we're looking for a proposed 2021 Wycomico County Priority Letter for Transportation Improvements. We have Mr. Whitelock and he's the Deputy Director of Public Works and Mr. Tony Rudy, the Airport Manager. So if you would, introduce yourselves and then we'll leave the floor for you.
Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Yes.
Tony Rudy, Airport Manager.
Yes.
Pull his mic closer. Pull your mic closer.
Mr. Whitelock, we can start with you.
Okay. So we had the 2021 Priority Letter for the State of Maryland Transportation Improvements. We can do this any way you guys want. A lot of this is redundant, I can just touch across them and you can ask me a question if you want.
Are you suggesting that we do this every year, the same letter, pretty much?
Well, it's pretty much like the same letter, just about.
If you want to just briefly go through it.
And I'll just touch the highlights of what has changed from one year to the next.
We pretty much already know what's going on.
And with that, I'll go ahead and let Tony start because the airport's the first thing on the list.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Rudy.
So this year, we've reduced the amount of projects we've asked for. We do have some CARES funding that are going to help us along here and these things are ever evolving, ever changing, but the two most important projects we have is our runway extension, which we really want to push for, and also our air traffic control tower. There are some issues that popped up there with weatherproofing with equipment. We'd like that to be taken care of and so that's what we're asking assistance from the state for this year.
Okay.
All right, so roads facility improvements, it goes back to the 13 Truckway Inspection Station relocation. It was on there last year, it's still on there this year. It's just basically asking, and they like it there, but not there. I find, you know, they want to relocate that to some other point. Salisbury Bypass feasibility study, that still goes back to, as you're coming off the bypass northbound, is the weaving of traffic going over on the left-hand lanes and right-hand lanes. I think it also discusses the southbound entrance as well and some pedestrian crossings. I know, gosh, he was interested in some of that last year, pedestrian crossings, especially there and at the Naylor Mill crossover as well. We have the Snow Hill Road, they want to do a intersection safety traffic signal warrant study, just a study to see if that warrants having a traffic.
At an intersection?
At an intersection, yes.
Where?
That was Nutters Crossroads and Snow.
Nutters Cross, yeah, that's been discussed. Mr. Hastings?
I lived out that way for a long time, that's a.
A tough one.
Yeah, it's a tough intersection.
Tough on the cross.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yes, it is. Mr. Hastings?
I just had a question on that. I used to take that road every day, going out to work. Were they ever considering a traffic circle? I mean, why? It seems like a lot of infrastructure put into space. I thought that, you know, every time I went by the road, so it's, it's just kind of surprising to me, but that's not part of the consideration or is it? I don't know.
I have not heard that.
I think it moves too fast there, usually the traffic circles or in the municipalities where you're speeding.
Slow down.
Mr. Slora. Just like the Fruitland one, I thought it kind of seemed like a similar spacing to me.
The only difference with the Fruitland one is, is I believe the road that comes up from Morse Mill and coming in is a lot slower traffic than.
Mount Herman Road is about 50 miles an hour.
So, all right, so next on the list is Route 50 Access Management for Warwick Community College.
You know, we've been putting that on the list for a number of years and it's never really gotten anywhere, but I don't think it's really been pushed a lot. And I think that from what I'm seeing as far as traffic at the Wolfston Switch and 50 intersection, I think we really need to put some emphasis on this to try to get a little more attention to it. I mean, apparently somebody, I guess Warwick's in favor of it.
Yes.
And I know that we're getting a lot more traffic on some of the backroads and, you know, coming out to that one traffic circle there, so I don't know what else we can do.
Well, some of what they're suggesting is ingress and egress from the college off Route 50 solely for the college.
Well, I would suggest just egress, just that would take a big part of it. That would take, I think ingress would, would create some confusion.
When you do that, your crossing over ingress is going to cross over egress for people that are coming.
So, you know, just do it for headed eastbound, but I don't know, put a star next to it or put it at the top of the list or we can, when we meet, we can just get a little stronger on it maybe.
Sure, sure. The Nenico Road Drainage Improvement Study, and again, we know that there are certain points along the road there that need some drainage help that have not been addressed from the state as of yet. So that's just to bring that to their attention.
Mark, I just have a quick question on that. With the West Side Connector, is that, part of the intent of that was to help with flooding?
Yes, and, yes, but not for that particular portion of the road. But it is tied in with some other things that are going on with the community over behind Centennial Village in there that are addressing some of those drainage issues in there, but there are more county issues than there are state issues. Pedestrian improvements, and they're basically, you know, looking at sidewalks up and down some of the 13 corridors, 50 corridors. some of the 13 corridors, 50 corridors, doing some other streets, East Main Church Streets, and just some crossings and different things that are in there. Same, they were all in there last year as well.
And, and I like the idea of those bike paths there, but I don't ever see anybody riding a bike in, mainly because the speed limit's so fast and it's pretty dangerous.
Yes, it is. The City of Salisbury is basically the same letter with the difference of one, one particular instance, and that is number five. The city has added in that the Eastern Shore Drive, Promenade, creation of a pedestrian and cycle-oriented promenade along Eastern Shore Drive to serve as a safe route between university and downtown. Includednesses are roundabouts at each end of Eastern Shore Drive and the intersections of Carroll Street and College Avenue. And those are the big changes that were for the, the City of Salisbury. Let me see where I'm at here.
Delmar.
Town of Delmar, Town of Delmar, they basically want to look at some, I believe it's down on Alternate 13, is some signalization studies as far as crossovers where Foskey Lane, Conley Mill, and some of those places are. And that's basically, you know, that's what they're asking for in some pedestrian improvements and amenities along.
Mark, there's been numerous accidents at Foskey Lane and 13 is, we got a state study on, on-
That's what they're asking.
That's what they're for.
That is one of the things that they were asking for.
Okay.
They did, they put some, some crossing lines in that intersection.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a pretty tough place to get in and out of.
Right, busy intersection. Okay.
Town of Hebron, they're, they're still looking at their Rails, Trails Initiative, requesting assistance from M.D.O.T. and planning and construction of that. They also want to look at some traffic signalization out on Route 50, I believe where the shore stop is.
670.
Yeah, 670. Is that, is that the right intersection? And some stormwater drainage and other issues that the town is, is having along some of those state roads there. So, if we move on from there... Where am I at now? Now we got Willard somewhere. I don't want to leave Willard out.
Till then, Willards.
Pittsville and then Willard. So Pittsville is actually, I know what they're looking for. They're looking for some drainage help along Gumbrell Road, coming off, especially I believe it's Pitts Avenue, isn't it?
Got an issue there.
So that's our, that's our main ask. The Town of Willards is asking that the state take, I can't find the letter.
That's popular, I mean, Bent Pine Road?
Bent Pine Road.
And if you want to update your letter with a note, they have paved that, so if the state wants, the state wants it, they can have a nice new paved road, but they would still like for the state to acquire that.
Yes.
And maintain it.
It's just a collector between Route 50 and, and Old Ocean City Road that the, the city can't, well, it's not that they can't, because apparently they have, but they don't want to continue to maintain due to budget shortages in the, in the town, so.
All right. Mr. Rudy, do you have anything else?
That's it.
All right, I want to thank you too. The Priority Letter needs formal approval by council on June 1st, so if we have a consensus, we can vote on it then. Anything else, Ms. Harley? Mr. Hastings?
I just want to say too, you know, this is a broader issue, not directly to this, and I probably need to follow up with Keith Hall and with the Salt River Metropolitan Planning Organization, but we need to secure the easements or secure the area for roadway for connecting the circumferential highway. Every major city that ever grows has a circumferential highway. The bypass expanded, and we've extended it in the past.
Right.
But it's going to have to connect one day, and right now, we've had a lot of development going out that area, and we haven't really been thinking it through. But one day, whether, you know, we may all be dead by then, but one way or another, it's got the, it'll be a whole heck of a lot harder to do it in the future when there's a lot of development, but we have to eventually connect those roads, just like every other major municipality does. So however we can put that into planning, or however we can start thinking about that, that would be helpful.
Maybe that could be put in the same letter as a, a planning, future planning.
Any more comments for Mr. Whitelock or Mr. Hitty?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next on the agenda is Mr. Steve Miller for the five-year lease agreement for the use of Mason Dixon Sports Complex in Delmar. Mr. Steve Miller from the Parks and Recs.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'll give you just a very brief overview. I'm here to talk about a proposed lease agreement, five-year lease agreement at the Mason Dixon Sports Complex in Delmar. For the past 40 years, this is a county-owned property. For 40 years, we have leased that property to the Town of Delmar and provided numerous recreation opportunities through the years. It's been a very good relationship and has resulted in a lot of opportunities for residents. When the time came to renew the lease, as we discussed with the Town of Delmar, the big, the major change here was that we introduced Delmar Little League as a third entity in the agreement. So now it is a three-way agreement between the county, the town, and the Little League. The thought process behind that was that the Little League is the primary user out there. They have been good stewards of their facilities in the past, and so we kind of all felt like that made sense. We've been working since last summer. The three entities have been going back and forth. It was a very good collaborative process. Unfortunately, the town had budget meetings today, so they couldn't be here, but it was a very good process, a lot of give and take between the three entities, and we all eventually landed where we are with, with the proposed MOU. So I'd be happy to outline the arrangement as far as what the responsibilities are, if, if you cared to hear about that, but essentially-
We're familiar with it. Does the council have any comments?
I'm not, you know, I've read it with the lease.
Yeah.
I mean, this is pretty-
Everybody good with it on your, on the other, the other few entities?
Yeah, all the parties, I think, are, are happy with where we landed.
Yeah, no need to drag it out, so we already know what it is. Mr. Cannon, do you have any questions or comments on it?
I think we could move on to the next work session, since Mr. Miller's here.
Yeah, I'd like to see us try to get that done if we can. We have the folks from the YMCA here as well.
Well, if we could, let's do that really quick then, because then we're going to keep running into different things. So they're here, so if they'd like to join us.
Now we know we're here.
So this is thoughts on a public-private partnership with the Richard A. Hansen family, YMCA. Mr. Steve Miller?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks Tourism for the county. If, if we want to maybe do quick introductions, and then I'll introduce-
Yes, please.
The opportunity. Tom?
Tom?
Tom Evans.
Hi.
Deanna Harrow.
I'm Robbie Gill. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the YMCA.
And I'm Tony Sarbenz, because I chaired the Administrative Board at the Y, so another hat.
Thank you.
Very good. So I'm pleased to be here, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to talk about this potential public-private opportunity with our friends here at the YMCA out at Harmon Field, which sits adjacent to the YMCA. I know most of you know this, but just for the benefit of the public, Harmon Field is one of the oldest parks that we have in our county system. It's about a 50-year-old park. At one time, and I won't ask anybody to date themselves here, but at one time, that was a hub of softball activ-, yeah.
I played a lot of baseball games there as a 20-something-year-old.
I've, I've heard many stories of, of Tales of Bravery out at Harmon Field, but, so at one time, that was the, the hub facility for the county, particularly with softball and baseball activity. Like, like everywhere else, and like everything else, things change over time. In the 1980s, we built the athletic complex in Salisbury. Since that time, we've expanded that complex, added more diamonds. So things evolved and things have changed, and that softball field, which was once a major hub, is no longer a hub. It's, it's very seldom used at this point. We have a basketball court out at the park, which is used. It probably needs some repair, but that, that is used on a regular basis. And then we have a swing set, it's not really a playground, but we have an old, kind of 80s, 70s-looking style swing set there. But that's what you have. So, so basically, what we've got is a, a 50-year-old, very tired, once hub park, that is now kind of a tired and a little bit rundown. What we're proposing, in conjunction with the YMCA, is to convert the ball field itself into a 12-court pickleball complex. That would be a lighted facility and be a dedicated complex for the sport of pickleball. We would renovate the basketball court, include adding benches and lights for the folks that play basketball. We would replace the swing set with an actual playground, and then we'd add other amenities like a pavilion or shade structure, which would really give the facility some life.
Said you would add lights?
Yeah, that, that, the, the full plan would be to have a lighted facility. Yes, sir. In terms of the benefits, and then I'll, I'll pass it to Mr. Gill here, but in terms of the benefits of the county, or to the county, I'll, I'll just highlight four what I see as major benefits. Number one, this would provide a brand-new recreation amenity, not just for local residents, but also enhance our ability to attract sports marketing tournaments, which we've had a lot of success, but this would now be a draw. This facility with an adjacent YMCA with a civic center right there, you could really draw some sports tourism with, with different people that normally don't come. Number two, we would revitalize a park in desperate need of renovation and, and new life. Thirdly, we would relieve pressure from shared courts. Right now, we have several of our facilities that share lines of pickleball and tennis. And so, for example, you have Kilburne, that's a small neighborhood park. Well, that park is regularly overrun with people that just are desperately wanting to play pickleball, and that's the facility, the parking, it's just not set up for that kind of mass traffic. So by creating this facility, we would divert pickleballers to this dedicated facility. That would free up courts for tennis and for other things, and relieve some pressure on our parks.
Would there be restrooms on this location?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and then lastly, I think this is, just in general, this would enhance a public-private relationship with the YMCA, which, from where I sit, the mission that we have in, in our department, which is quality of life, we share a lot in common with the YMCA in terms of our mission. So this would really enhance that relationship. It would allow us to, to offer some new amenities and really strengthen that relationship and, and enhance our ability to deliver on our mission. So I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Gill and the YMCA and their perspective, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity today. I just mentioned, Tom Evans serves on our corporate board. So we're, YMCA of Chesapeake is made up of 11 locations across the Eastern Shore, as far north as Cecil County, as far south as Schenectady Island. We serve about 40,000 people. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport that we're involved in. We have about 1,000 people that are playing pickleball weekly across the shore. And as Deanna will tell you, who runs the Y here in Salisbury, we don't have enough space for those folks either. And so partnering together makes a lot of sense. We partner with Talbot County, with our YMCA in St. Michael's. It's a YMCA and a senior center within the same facility and actually sits on school property. And we're also building a Y in Queen Anne's County that's in partnership with Queen Anne's County, where the senior center is embedded within the YMCA, because you're bringing people to one hub. And that's what I love about Stephen's idea, is that you've got 8,000 people the YMCA is serving within Salisbury already, and to have Harmon Field sitting right there, you've got complementary services and programs. So the YMCA around teaching people to play the game and coordinating can work together with the county to do that. If you're holding a large event, you've got ample parking and indoor space that can be utilized to make that a, a really nice event to where if I'm not playing at a particular time, the Y's gymnasium can be used as a shade space for people to eat and relax and have fun. So you're really complementing one another, working together to make a bigger impact. And it is the fastest-growing sport in the United States, and that's really not going to change, because it's just an easy game to play. We're seeing all ages participate. While most people think about older adults that are playing, we see a ton of kids participating, as well as young adults. And then from a diversity standpoint, it's a game that we're seeing everyone from all communities coming together to play and participate. So I think it's a really great way to repurpose a, a park that was once a hub, and it'll become that again, because you're providing a designated space that can really make a substantial impact and meet a gap in the community right now.
And even though Robbie mentioned it's the fastest-growing sport-
You need to use the mic.
I would say about the last seven years, it's been growing. So we started out with just some makeshift courts on a basketball court, taping some lines down. And we're at the point now, we have three indoor courts that are shared with youth tennis courts and basketball courts. So there's just constantly a struggle amongst our members, you know, wanting more playing time. It's a very committed group, and as Robbie said, very diverse. Age-wise, everything from kids up to folks in their late 80s are playing. So it's great how many, you know, people can come in and interact and be physically fit together. It's great to see. And we're also just so excited about the opportunity to partnership with the county. I think it's great for the community and gives us a way to expand services for a lot of people.
Mr. Holloway, did you have a question?
Now there's a basketball court there, and people can use it, they don't have to pay. If this agreement's reached, will the people that use this for pickleball, or basketball, or whatever, have to be members of the Y?
It's to be a public facility.
It'll be, be public.
The difference is, is if we were providing, let's say, clinics to where people could learn to play the game or get lessons, you would charge for those, or if you were having a tournament, you would charge for those particular events, but it would be just like any other park. The biggest difference is, is you've got the Y sitting right there, and so from a support standpoint, around providing programs and teaching, as well as from a life safety standpoint, if there was an issue, you've got staff that are right there. So you would want to have an AED on site, and then you've got quick response and so forth and so on. It's just, because it's sitting literally right beside the Y's property, it makes a whole lot of sense to, to work together.
You have the, the basketball, you have the, the softball field. What is, what is the other field being used for right now? Is that being used to help?
Yep, the track.
That's Y property.
That is Y property.
That's Y property.
That's, yeah, the summer camp.
So we use those for summer camp and youth sports programming and a variety of things, yes.
So, but the, the county doesn't own that? The county just owns the ball field and the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm having trouble just kind of figuring what's the pros and cons for each. We're just saying, instead of keeping that as a public field and a basketball court, how is it changing dynamically? I mean, what is changing?
So, the major change is, is converting the softball field into the pickleball complex. So you'd have now 12 pickleball courts, which, we don't have that anywhere in the county, so that would be the, the major change. The other changes would be improved amenities. So you're talking about a shade structure, you're talking about restrooms, improving the playground. So those would be other, I think, enhancements to it, but the major change would be converting that softball field.
Steve, we used to have a lot of tennis played around here. Would these pickleball courts be used for tennis also, being pickle, tennis courts are used for pickleball, or is there much of a difference?
Yeah, they're, they're different-sized courts, so these would not be tennis, but, but indirectly, this would help tennis, because instead of having to share, like at Winter Place, Billie Jean Jackson, we share lines, because there's no facility. You would no longer have to do that.
What's going on around the county now is, because pickleball's so popular, people are playing on the tennis courts, the basketball courts, you know, anywhere there's a sort of paved surface, you know, they're trying to utilize those for pickleball.
Well, you do have crossover in that tennis players play pickleball. You have a lot of pickleballers that never played tennis.
Right.
And, and, and the ball is plastic, and it's loud. And so what you'll find is, is pickleballers and tennis players don't really enjoy being next to each other, at least tennis players don't, because they're not accustomed to the noise. And so having that designated space, it, it creates credibility to the importance of pickleball in the community and that you've designated a space to where that game can continue to grow and flourish. And to Stephen's point, you're freeing up your tennis courts to where then people can play tennis and do their thing too. So it's, I think it's a really smart idea.
Steve, did I hear you say that they weren't using that field for softball?
We use it for practices now, but at one time, it had lights, so those, those poles kind of rotted out, so the lights are no longer there. So it's, it's essentially a practice field now.
I've seen a lot of kids playing there and in uniforms, so apparently they're playing with some league. And, and I know the city did away with the baseball field that was in the park there, and I'm-
I think sometimes junior girls' softball has used it on occasion, especially when they have the tournaments and stuff. I think sometimes they use-
U-trip.
Yeah, it's very, it's very sporadic, and it's mostly practice, a practice facility, which we've got quite a few of those.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'd hate to see us do away with another ball field.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, to your point, I think we've got, you know, you've got Nick Meyer down the road. There's, I can't remember off the top of my head how many diamond fields we have, but, but that's not an issue as far as meeting the demand. I don't foresee that being an issue. Whereas this, we're, we're meeting a public demand and, and creating a new amenity.
I definitely see that demand. I know there's a group at West Side that travels to Ocean Pines to use their pickleball. And just a question that I had with, you said the clinics and the camps that you would do, is that something that Parks and Recs would be doing, or that's something that-
We work together on those types of-
Okay.
Yeah, and what, we wanted to bring this before you, just to, to gauge the temperature as to the concept itself, but what we would try to do, and what we initially had conversations, is creating an MOU if we were to move forward with this. Create an MOU where we answer those types of questions on maintenance, on usage, on programming, on scheduling, and how that relationship would work. So in, in our conversations, we've talked about a very cooperative arrangement where we could program it, the Y- the YMCA could program it, but then it would always be open to the public as well, where someone who just wants to play can come to the park and play, so.
I think one of the, when I asked you about who would be charged, I think one of the things myself and maybe some of the other council members are concerned about is county owning the land, but at some point in time in the future where they can't use it because the Y is involved. And I don't think the council members would wanna hear those complaints in the future, you know? And you answered our question when you said it would be free, so that's fine, thank you.
That is the only question I would have, and maybe when the MOU comes forward, how do you define who has a priority to use the field or the pickleball course, court? Would it be a member of the YMCA? Do, can people from Wycomica County just walk in there and say, we're gonna play today? How is, is it gonna be registered? What happens now? What would happen?
It would be no different than the tennis courts that you currently have now. You don't have a staff person who's checking to see if that person is a resident or if they live in Ocean City or Easton or anywhere else. So, it's, it's public access, but you, but you're also gonna have programming available. Because what, what pickleballers are looking for is people that wanna learn the game are looking for a way to learn and be taught how to do it and then participate, and then as people play, they wanna participate in leagues, just like a softball league or anything else where they get to play other folks. So, you, so to really make that strong, you wanna provide a programming component as well. But as an example, at the Easton Y, every morning, there are seventy people that play pickleball every day. Some are members, some aren't, they play back on the tennis court. So, you're gonna see, from a recreation standpoint, just a large number of people going to that specific space to play regular pickleball, just like if a kid walked out there to shoot basketball today. There isn't anyone that's staffing that park to say, well, is this Wycomica County resident that's shooting basketball? It's just.
So, if, if three or four people from the county wanna go out and go to, and play, and they show up and there are people there from, I'm gonna say from the Y, because that's just maybe their association, is it just random, okay, you know, wait a half an hour and then you can play? How are we going to do that combination with people who are members of the Y creating a conflict with, you know, citizens in the community?
There are citizens in the community too, so they, so logistically, imagine it this way, you would have, we do this like with our partnership with the senior center in St. Michael's. So, a group exercise room may be used for a Y class at nine, and then the senior center may be running a different kind of class at ten AM, and so it's all in one space. So, you're gonna have open time for participation and play, and then you may have a clinic that's being run by the county at eleven AM on these courts, and the Y running an after-school program at three PM on these courts, and that schedule would be provided for people to see. But probably what you would find is ninety-five percent of the time, it's gonna be open play for people within the community to play pickleball.
Yeah, and I'll comment on that as well. I think with twelve courts, I think even if you had a youth program or a clinic or whatever it was, you would have a certain amount of courts that would always be open for the public, for people to come in. The only time I could envision, maybe it's closed down, and this would be no different than any other facilities, if you have a major event. If you have a big tournament event, you need all twelve dedicated courts. Maybe on certain weekends, it's not open, but primarily, we would work programming around, but always leave courts available for the public.
Maybe one last thing I'll mention, it's a completely different game than tennis. So, if we were playing tennis, you, we would find four people and we go play tennis and we play for an hour and a half. Pickleball is very communal, so when you get there, there could be twenty people, and a game takes about eight to ten minutes, and then people rotate in and rotate out. So, it's not like if we were going to play golf or going to play tennis where I just have my four. It's communal in that open play is from ten to twelve, and you're gonna have forty people show up and then they're playing with each other. And that's the other piece that I love about it, is it's building relationships amongst community members.
Well, that's a big part of its popularity, is a very inviting game. I mean, the people that participate are very big in, you know, getting people to participate and, and share and playing. And, and actually, John, to your question a little bit, that's not really much different than our tennis courts we have around the county and a lot of our, a lot of our ball fields, you know, they're open to the public, but then sometimes we have, you know, tournaments going on or something when, you know, they're being utilized for that event. But most of the time, they're sitting there available for the public.
Will the lighting, will the lighting be so, like on a dial, so people can use it at nights as well as in the daytime?
Yeah, that's one of the things we've discussed, so we've not made a final decision on that. But that is something we've kicked around as something that maybe the YMCA could manage for us as far as a switch where people, because they staff it till ten o'clock at night. So, I don't have an answer to that question, that's something that we would need to work through though.
Okay.
Yep.
I know, I remember the SU tennis courts before they tore them down, but they used to have a dial. You could, the timer, you turn it on and they'd be on for, because I know you'd be playing, the lights would go off.
Yeah.
There's one at the City Park, and I think it's for thirty minutes.
It's like thirty minutes or something, right? And you can just reset it.
My daughter used to play there and teach me how to play, so. Alright, any more questions, Mr. Hastings?
I just wanna say real quick, my, on my dad's grave is his flowers, and then he's got his pickleballs. There's no, there's nothing that he enjoyed more in the last, you know, eight, ten years of his life than pickleball. And he had, he had an absolute amazing family of pickleball folks at the Y. So, the more that you can, I'm glad you're moving in this direction, that's really helpful, really needed. I think all my questions have been answered, the lighting was an issue for me. I think this is a, this is a very diverse group. It used to be, I saw it was just seniors, you know, like a decade ago. Now, it's very much more diverse and it's just a great group of folks and certainly fast-growing.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Alright, if you wanna work on the MOU and bring it back to us, I think there were some questions that needed to be answered too, so.
Great.
Alright, thank you all for.
Nice to see you.
Thanks again.
Thank you all.
And this time, we're gonna take a thirty-minute quick.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting of the Wycomica County Council back in legislative session. We're on a time crunch, so one of the previous work sessions went longer than we expected, so the process for selecting the redistricting committee and the discussion on congressionally-directed spending projects, we're gonna postpone that until the next meeting. But this time, I need a motion to go into closed work session.
So, moved.
Thank you. What we're gonna do is do one at a time.